Oh, meeting the order. First thing I want to say is welcome back Kathy.
Thank you.
Glad to see your mobile.
Ah, boy.
Is that yours or mine? I think that's mine, isn't it?
No.
Huh, looks exactly, mine's exactly the same.
Is it?
Yeah.
I like the color, don't you?
Mm-hmm. Angela Goddard, I think it says Newcastle. It's old. Yeah.
No, it looks new.
No, it's old. Sit there and build something. Took the bait.
Anybody got any questions about the minutes?
Uh, some of the stuff we'll probably get to, we get to the other portion later. Chair. Cause they're gonna see if we've done anything more about the, the dirt and the
Yeah.
Other stuff.
Yeah, I got a note here, they talked Doug got with Rick and Ron, both are thinking about that.
And then we're just gonna check with Bob on that, about those permits and tap fees.
I was gonna, I got a note on that too, we picked up one tap fee, four hook-up fees from the new property that's going in up there.
And then.
He looking at my notes.
No. No, and then I was gonna ask you about the, who's gonna go do the ordinance thing, you know?
He looked at, yeah, we're gonna, I saw that, but Adam looked, yeah, Adam looked at.
That's not it, that's all I got.
You got anything, Ms. Kathy, about the ordinance?
Which one?
I mean the ordinance, I'm sorry, about the minutes.
Why are they hauling so much dirt back and forth over this opal's place? What, what's, where's all that?
They gotta have Phil, they gotta bring the, the, but it's like pit run gravel they put in before they pour the slab on there.
I've seen, oh, I'd hate to guess how many dump trucks of dirt.
Yeah.
Probably the level, it seemed like that had a slope to it toward Main Street anyway.
Small dump trucks maybe?
Probably any dump trucks.
Oh, yeah, smaller ones, that would take a lot more trips.
That's it?
Nothing else? Okay, I would make a motion that we accept the minutes from last month's meeting.
I second it.
Motion been made and properly seconded to accept minutes from last month's meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same, motion carried, thank you. Appearance by citizens. Excuse me?
Yeah.
Oh, well, no, the yellow sheets.
Yeah, it sits right there.
Where? Oh, memorandum, ah, okay, I see where you snuck that in there, right? Oh, that meeting we had.
It's on here. It's right here. Right after the.
I guess I'll go ahead and read it, I think I have in the past. Executive session of the Greens Fork Town Council was held March 7, 2024 at 5:30 PM at Greens Fork Town Hall, 12 South Water Street, Greens Fork, Indiana. Council members Buddy Strunk, Kathy Campbell, and Scott Cushing were present. Additional attendee was Facilities Coordinator Doug Wheeler. Council met to discuss job performance evaluation of individual employee pursuant to code 5-14-1.5-6.1B9. Greens Fork Town Council members certify that no subject matter was discussed in the session other than a subject specified in the public notice for the above meeting. The only motion made was for the meeting adjournment at 6:30 PM. Council President Buddy Strunk motion to adjourn, and Council Kathy Campbell seconded, it was all in favor, motion carried.
Do you need your motion to accept that?
We'll sign it first and we'll sit down. And I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of that meeting.
I second it.
Motion been made and properly seconded to accept the minutes of the executive session of the Greens Fork Town Council, March 7, 2024, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same. How you doing?
Good.
You want to do a silent adjournments?
What?
You want a silent adjournments?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, Officer Bush. You coming back, Ken? There's a storm rolling in, and they're moving right along there, Ken. Okay, sewer plant operation, I was out by there this afternoon and it's a flowing. I did take a look at the effluent that goes into the river and it looked pretty clean, I wouldn't drink out of it, hypothetically, but it looked clean.
I imagine she's real thirsty. I imagine she's real thirsty.
Oh, yeah. Real thirsty.
We're all real thirsty.
Not on the desert thirsty.
Yeah.
Cellist Coordinator report, Doug Wheeler. This is gonna be a quick meeting. Building Commissioner report, Bob Bullock.
We got a live body here.
Well, we, they're coming right along up there with the houses, they've got the blocks all laid, they put the drains and everything in for the new house. I expected, inspected them this afternoon, they were all right.
What did you expect this afternoon? The drains? The drains.
The floor drains and, and all, the plumbing for the house, houses. Got with Doug on what the contractor wanted for the street for the, to hook up to the town's sewer line. That got paid, didn't it?
They paid the fees yesterday.
Okay.
Yes, yesterday.
Need to, did you put a copy in their folder? You need to put a copy in their folder that you keep.
Okay, I can do that, I have a receipt in there.
Yeah, put a receipt or whatever in there.
Okay.
Things is looking good on the other house, they're coming right along. Like I say, they had to backfill the, the house to bring it up so they could put the, pour the cement floor in it. So everything's falling into place up there. I still haven't seen the guy on the other house, Mr. Strunk on the other house up there.
He's not moved in yet.
No, but he needs to pay his tap fee, I guess.
When does that have to be paid by the ordinance? Does that even state that in the ordinance?
I don't, no, I hadn't read it, I haven't, I haven't read it.
Now, we won't, if we see him.
But it's already, it's already tapped, wouldn't it?
There was a tap there, yeah.
Okay.
Or just a hook fee.
Just a hook-up fee, so.
Well, how about the one down here on South Water, I haven't got that one yet.
Okay, I'll, I'll check.
And my question with that, they can just hook to the existing tap just on the barn there? It's just, it's just a hook fee too, right, on that one?
Okay, I'll deal with him on that. His job's come along all right down there too. I do need, he called about the roof that was going on on Main Street. I do need that, his address and everything so I can stop by and see.
Okay, well, he said he talked to you. He said you had called him, I thought.
Who's address?
Remember when I talked to McDaniel, Derringer? Uh, next to Becky and Tammy.
I didn't know they were doing anything.
Putting the roof on it.
You happen to know you ain't building commissioner? They put, they's putting the roof on, they's putting the roof on, I just.
Well, I haven't got any.
He called me and I called Bob.
He must have done it last year then, I haven't got any permit money.
No, he didn't do it last year.
He just called to have it done.
They're doing it yesterday or today, I think.
I don't think they done it today.
Fire to doing it?
Well, we tried to.
If they can get a hold of the building commissioner, yes, but if they can't, what do they do?
They can come in here, I could send them over there.
Well, I got a call on it, it's.
Where do they get the building permits here now, is it?
They get them from Bob.
Just called me.
Okay.
I had to get with them.
Cause he, he tried to get it at the annex and, well, I actually came to the courthouse and I was like, no, our, our permits aren't here.
Well, that's the same way with.
Then he called me and I called Bob.
We, we've got it taken care of, I think.
Okay.
Just as soon as I get.
Anybody that's gonna own up to doing this gonna pay us if we're good.
This, this, this week's been a bad week for me, so.
I hate to hear that. Anything else going on, Bob?
Not that I know of.
Anybody got any questions for Bob?
Oh, you need, you need to drop that in the mailbox.
Okay.
Any training coming up you need to go to, or?
Not that I know of.
Good.
Oh, I thought you had to go for something.
There's something later on in the year, I think, I wonder.
Oh, okay, it's not.
I, yeah, that's why I asked, I didn't know if it might be April or something.
It's that floodplain manager.
Yeah.
Job. I might, I might get with the building commissioner in Hagerstown and go with him, cause he's gotta take it too.
Cool, will that save us any money?
Made me ask.
Guess money. Never hurts to ask.
Made me guess, buddy.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion on the building commissioner's oral report there.
I second it.
I said I would entertain a motion, I thought maybe you'd make it.
I'd make a motion that we accept Bob's report.
I'll second it. Motion been made and properly seconded to accept Bob's building commissioner report, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same, thank you. Motion carried. Hello, Officer Bush, we'll entertain the police report now.
I just have to. What was I hearing, what did I do with it?
Yeah, you can read off mine.
Okay. I have one right here.
I got it.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
You should already have a copy.
Ignore what's written on there.
Oh.
You doodling? I didn't read it.
Ron and I went to the, our annual conference that we go to in February, pretty much it updates our annual mandated train hours that we have for the year. I talked to you guys about bringing on Brian as a reserve, so I just wanted to kind of recap on that and find out if that's something that I'd be able to do or not.
Who's Brian?
Brian Atkinson.
Yeah, Kathy hasn't met him, could you have him met or did yourself the police commissioner, Kathy?
I'm Brian Atkinson.
Where are you from, Brian?
I'm from Newcastle.
Oh, Newcastle.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the only downside, I couldn't find anybody else from Carthie to bring over here, so.
If you can put up with him.
But, so, my thought would be that, is that I wanted to bring him on, but that would be upon completion of doing all my background checking stuff, so. And then I would just give, give a buddy and give him swearing later on.
So you don't need an answer right now?
Well, I just need, need approval.
Okay to do the check.
I don't have a problem with him doing the background check.
Okay.
What's it cost you?
No, it's nothing, I just have dispatch running. So.
Scott, you got a problem?
I have no problem.
Okay.
I've also worked at two other police departments.
You worked for Henry County Sheriff's Department?
Actually, I actually.
Three.
If I remember correctly, you're ideally certified.
Yes.
That's right, see.
If I remember correctly, he's got a lot of heavy equipment, fire trucks, he's got a towing business, I remember a few.
You got a blimp or anything like that?
Blimp?
He's got a lot of heavy.
Balloon? Yeah.
He's qualified.
So, if that would be, it had to be acceptable, just that, um, approval to bring him on, upon completion of the background check, that's why.
I'll make a motion to go forward.
I'll second it.
Motion been made and properly seconded to go forward with the check on Brian, last name?
Atkins.
Atkins. As a reserve officer, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same.
Installed a, the new, the new ink cartridge on the time clock, I don't know if people noticed it.
Yeah.
I couldn't even read my time anymore, so, last month I bought one on Amazon and popped it right in, it's good to go for another couple of years, hopefully. I created Scott's new ID card, so got a couple ID cards showing that he's with the town of Greens Fork.
Not a long time ago. I don't know where it is.
Uh, the.
I don't know where it is.
The charger had a bad, had a, actually had a bad battery and a bad starter last month, and the battery was actually surprisingly warranted from Napa, where the state police had already purchased it. So that was taken care of, and Brian actually had a starter, and Brian changed it, and no, no charge does, and that's a, you know, that's about a $1,400 bill right there if we'd have took, if we'd have took it somewhere else to get it done. So, wanted to appreciate Brian for doing that. The first, the first LPR had, had been ordered, and there's a copy of the, of the invoice with it. So basically, what that means is that whenever the unit physically gets here, that's when Brenda would be okay to pay it, and then we'd go through the reimburse process. And that usually takes about 30 days, they said, after we get a copy of the check from the bank, they, it went through, then we just submit it, and they actually have our banking information already. Brenda already set that up, so it would be just digitally transferred back to the town, and they said roughly about 30 days. So I just wanted, um, approval for Brenda to be able to do that once the unit physically gets in, in our hands. And then when, then when, then when that gets done in a couple of months, then we'd order the, the next one, and just keep.
She's already got the money part all figured out.
Uh, she, why? She, yeah, she's, yeah, she, she said that, that she's, and she's been talking, talking with, uh,
Janice. Janice.
And loose money Janice over here.
As long as they've got the, everything working out like that.
So, I mean, so that would be, um, approval to take, what she would do is that she would take our, the invoice that comes with the unit, plus I got one already mailed to us, and then she would take that, she'd write the check, pay it, and then I don't know how long it takes for a check to clear anymore, I mean, probably a couple of weeks, I would think, for it to get where it's going to clear.
Seven, 10 business days, I think.
And then she would just contact the bank and get a copy of the, of the cleared check, and then we would upload that to the state website, and then they would work their magic.
It's probably, the whole process would probably take about 30 days, I imagine.
Well, you know, 30 days, 60 days, we're, we're in it early in the year, and this is our first go-around on doing this, so we're kind of, we're kind of learning as we go.
What a better idea than for the next.
Can you, can you do me a favor while we're on here, right on in this, Rick? I see the unit price is $18,502 for the.
Right, so.
Reader itself. Explain a little bit about what the tech dispatch is at 1250, the UFC operations.
That's for them to install it, and then the, the other stuff where it talks about, it looks like it's, it's a licensee, that's for the software, and it's a one-time deal on the software, we get updates free forever on the software. And like this was 22,000, but the other one's 19,000, because of these, these, these other costs will not be like, like doubled, you know what I'm saying?
Gotcha.
So, this one's 22,000, the other one's like 19,000, and one thing, like 19,700 dollars or something to that effect, but.
When you say they install it, you mean they'll come out here?
Yeah, they're gonna come here and install it.
How long does it take for them to do that, do you know?
I didn't have to ask Ron, but they done it like, they done it like six hours.
At Lewisburg, or Lewisville?
Yeah, yeah. So that's why I put a copy in here for you guys to look at, so that, that way you, you guys see exactly what's, what's, what's totally transparent to everyone of exactly what's going on with it. So, and like I said, we'll see how long it takes to get reimbursed for that, we will get ideal on the other items that we're gonna be buying, and so. And like I said, we're early enough in the year, it's not, it's not detrimental, as long as we get, get done by, I think it's by the end of the year, I think that we'll be in good shape.
Is any of the other local type law enforcement's getting them?
Wayne County's got two of them.
Yeah, I remember.
One shift and day shift and night shift, but, uh, yeah, I mean nights, you see night's town, you're seeing, you're seeing state police is, is starting to buy them. For whatever reason, I don't know why, cause I can't get an answer, but they'll, they'll fund these things like it's M&amp;M's. But if you want a car that's the same price as that, that license plate reader, there is absolutely no. So it's really, it's kind of frustrating, cause small towns, I mean, it really bites us real, real tight. But hey, you know, I'm getting what I can get as, and maybe next year I can get us a dump truck or something, I mean, who knows?
Remember what I say, we're high-tech rednecks.
We are, we try to be. Uh, but, uh.
He'll Billy's with money.
Well, do you, do you know if Doug was gonna be here today?
No, he, he's not gonna be here.
Okay. Uh, on the, on the Crown Vic, for some reason, the gas gauge is showing like a quarter of a tank, but I physically can't put more gas in the gas tank. So either the gas gauge is wrong, or a while back we had an issue with that tube, and they would not let us put gas in there, and Doug had to fix that, that, you know, the tube that goes in the fill tube?
Fill tube.
The gas tank, I don't, I was gonna see if Doug could look at it and see if that's collapsed or make sure we're looking at this right, but the gas gauge is showing quarter, but I tried to put gas in it, and it's not letting me do it, so. I just wanted to get with Doug on that. But other than that though, that's, that's pretty much far forward, like I said, we're just, we're moving right, trying to move up, trying to push everybody right along with, with the stuff we're getting for the grant, and I think that unit is probably like a week or two out getting here, but when it gets there, it's probably, it's gonna come, they need to, need to, need to be, it'd be a couple boxes.
The Crown Vic, is that car one?
Yes.
What's the mileage for car two?
I'd have to go out there, I'm not gonna look at it.
Anybody got questions for Rick?
Well, no, I mean, you guys have already approved Brenda to do it, I just wanted to bring it up again. I just wanted to keep you guys in the loop on what's going on with this, with this thing, so that way everyone's.
Yeah, we approved it, we just wanted her to be able to make sure that the money works for us, cause.
If she figured out how to do it, okay.
Cause that's what our concern was, we know we're getting reimbursed.
Has something to do with her friend Peter and Paul, or Robin from Peter and Pay Paul.
She said, don't worry, that she was gonna, that she was gonna talk to felony Sue here, that they were gonna work things out.
We just wanted to make sure it doesn't affect our operating.
As long as we can do a quick turnaround, that's what our big, our big unknown is, how.
We need a quick turnaround.
I think it's gonna be pretty quick.
Only question I got is, I'm looking at page one and two of three, but I'm not seeing page three of three, what else?
Three is just all the, all the disclaimer stuff, it's not good draft.
That's fine, that's fine, I believe you, I just.
Well, she won't need that much, it was only 22.
For right now.
I make the motion.
We're done, we're not doing them all at one time.
Okay, well, she can take it all out of that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, she can just pull from edit, and as long as it leaves us enough to.
Anybody got anything else for me?
Have we had any more issues with the dogs or anything? Since you don't have.
No, no, yeah, no.
She's got a new boyfriend, and he really, really takes care of those kids.
Well, I'm saying, when I was over, we were talking, talking with you that day, Kathy, I seen him walking out to the vehicle and then doing something with the dog before he left.
So then, is the Dodge truck on or not?
No, it was in the driveway.
It's in the driveway.
It's in the driveway, I think, I don't think pushed it or drove it, but I know the next day it was moved.
I'd have to venture, they probably pushed it, cause I kind of, if it sat out there for six or seven months, it wouldn't drive, or it wouldn't have been there anyway. Kathy didn't make a motion to accept the police report.
I'll second it.
And the motion been made and properly seconded to accept police report, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same, motion carried, thank you. Sewer utility monthly income and dispatches.
In February, we took in almost $15,000, got a lot of customers paying ahead right now, which is good, and we distributed about 10 and a half. On February the 1st, when we done utility billing, we had eight accounts that were in 29 days, and the clerk treasurer had to record three new sewerlings in February. In December, we received a sewerling settlement of $4,694, and then the clerk treasurer has released these paid 24 sewerlings, and it's leaving us 28 outstanding sewerlings yet to be paid through the Wayne County Treasurer's Department. So, that's about it. So, that's about it.
Pretty good then or?
Well, anytime you see, we, we, uh, spent a little bit last, we drew in, it's been.
Well, the numbers are looking good up here.
They're looking good, but they're gonna go south.
It's early in the year.
They're, they're, they're going south this month. But they look good in February.
One month at a time.
Alright, I'll make a motion, we accept Nita's, uh, sewer income and dispersments report. Most been made properly seconded, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say the same. Carry, thank you, Nita. I did speak with Doug earlier today, he apologized, he had something that was very pressing that he had to do this evening. So we said, okay. What else did you say?
No choice.
He's a busy man. Sewer report. At you Scott, what you gotta do this month?
I mean, street report.
Oh, I'm sorry, street and sewer tasks sheet, you know, we're both of them.
Looks like they've been doing some lift station checks.
That's just one person right there, just Rick Shepherd.
Do you know anything about the Wetzel Ford order parts stuff? Does anybody know anything about that?
Wetzel Ford was.
Ordered parts.
Ordered parts and then there's a pickup of parts here later too.
I think it was for the white truck, don't they?
I would think it's. Good at Wetzel Ford, but yeah. You know?
Just curious about that.
Good question.
That was the first thing I noticed on there, cause it's, uh, not usually something that's on here. Mostly it looks like they're just cleaning up streets and stuff like that, but it looks like they had to do some work on one of the vehicles.
I checked it earlier, I know that they didn't pick up tires, I mean, they, they rotated some tires to make them get through the winter, they might be getting a set of those probably. Here soon.
Oh, they're getting the tires?
Assume.
For the?
The white truck.
Yeah, they need it bad.
Well, I, that's what I'm saying, they rotated from the front to the back.
To buy us time.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, excuse me, it won't be on that report because that's Ricky's report, but the street department did do this snowy little.
Yeah, I hadn't quite got that for you yet.
Uh, it's, it's not on there because that is Ricky's report. And Ricky wasn't here, Doug and Becca.
Okay. There's a little bit of snow came in.
Last meeting, if I'm not mistaken or whatever.
It was in February.
Oh, was it? We had, we had a last blast of snow drop a little bit.
It was, they spent almost four hours apiece out there, they were teamed up on it.
I couldn't believe it, cause I plowed my dries.
Yeah, it was, I was glad to see.
Pretty good amount of snow there.
I was glad she was able to help him.
It looks like they just did their normal tasks with lift stations and getting rid of limbs and of course I know they plowed the snow and everything like that. I'm just curious about what the, what. I'm assuming it would be for the white truck. And it looks like they, do they get an impact? On Wayne County sales or something?
Where you at? Oh, lift station check, brush, upstreet, pickup, impact at Wayne County sale. Seems like they bought quite a few impacts in the last.
What's an impact?
Impact wrench. Probably air tool, or probably, not probably not air tool, probably a twenty volt battery impact, if I'm, I'm guessing.
Wonder if they had taken in.
I'd say they must have bought another, they got plenty of that, I think. But you're gonna take care of that, cause they're really bad now. Well, being it's hard for you guys to get together, maybe you just say, hey, you know, if you guys are gonna put something like that, just have what it was and.
Man, you got the, you got all the receipts on this stuff or? They turn them in? You get a receipt, I can figure out what it is.
Or a mud flap?
I'm guessing that's what it is, it's what's sitting here.
I know, I got a call, but they, they were in.
I'm guessing they must have got tore up.
Yeah, I'm guessing they bought new ones, SP one, CSRP source, whatever it is, they list fifty-five dollars a piece, hundred and ten dollars. Says here, the last payment of a hundred and thirty-eight dollars was received, what was that for?
Brenda?
In November, do you remember off the top of your head? Don't get it out.
Ask me what?
She just walked into it or walked into it?
November, it's just here on this invoice from Wetzel Ford where they got some mud flaps that says, date eleven sixteen twenty-three, last payment of a hundred and thirty-eight dollars was received. Do you remember off the top of your head what they, in November, what they got out Wetzel?
Nobody can look.
Eh, I'm just curious.
Was it your new tires?
I don't think we've got a tire there, was it?
I don't think you can get a new tire for a hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
No.
Not a good one anyway.
I just got, I just got tires of Wetzel Honda and they didn't, cause they were that low. They were expensive.
They are expensive.
But I wanted to get decent tires.
Didn't we have to get a window, but that was.
Very nice though.
More expensive than that, wasn't it?
It might have been a window. One time we had to get a window.
Might have been that driver's side window. I do remember there was a crack in one and I think it did get fixed, so that could very well have been what it was.
What was the date on that?
Eleven twenty-three, uh, November of twenty twenty-three.
Right.
Might have got paid for in December too, you never know.
Looks like they cleaned the dog kennel skin too.
I just don't understand how a truck that's barely two years old. Has not been taken care of better.
Well, it goes down this old gravel road every day and I think that takes its toll on it really.
Yeah, you should see the county.
They don't go easy down that gravel road, they just go balls out and.
You're probably right.
Yeah, I am probably right, I mean, yeah, probably.
They went in the snow, they probably had to.
I guess we could see if our, uh, police could pull somebody out there in the woods and hide with a gun and see what, how fast they're going down through there, then we can. Pop them at the next meeting.
We get them to show up.
Okay. You wanna make a motion to accept that report?
I, it's, I've got it here, just give me a second.
Yeah, I'm waiting on that.
I bet you she goes through window.
But they are, you wanna go ahead and get the tires?
No, I'm just saying. Not right now, that's why, they, they did rotate in front of the back to get, get the tread on the back.
Customer states that the vehicle's not charging the trailer battery, check it advised. Verify complaint, check for power to the trailer adapter and. And the was none, checked for power coming directly out of the TRM and none was present. Inspected fuse and found that it was blown, installed a new fuse and wiggled on the wire and the fuse did not re-blow, test whatever was plugged in. Was pulled, functioned properly for a wiring issue on that component, so we spent a hundred and twenty-five dollars because a fuse was blown. And we got some pretty smart guys out there, I'm surprised they.
Well, we got one, but he's pretty thin, he's a warm, pretty thin.
Electrical on a vehicle is not an easy.
No, but even I would know to look for a fuse before I took it to Ford and I'm just a girl.
I bet your daddy told you that, taught you that when you was a young girl. That's when they had the, the chrome on the end and glass, that when the plug.
Yeah, probably, yeah, I wouldn't know what a fuse looked like now, probably.
They're little, they're hard to pull out. Now we know what that was.
Oh, ready then, I'll make a motion, we accept the, uh, street report.
Second it.
Who's second it?
I did.
Heard two people, Kathy.
Most have been made and properly seconded, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion carried, thank you. Uh, speed humps and paving, springtime, it's, it feels like spring out there, but it's not.
Yeah, it's supposed to be like thirty something on Monday.
I think, uh, he's been looking at stuff.
Yeah, yeah, he looked at some, uh.
He said, leave it out, leave it out.
That's what he's looking at. I wished, oh, we had a, you remember when we bought the one that we had in the alley over there, I don't. Never saw it after it's.
Somebody maybe got hit, tore up.
Yeah.
I think so.
Is that just a, like, throwdown?
Well, it's like a, I think it bolts down actually, but I'm not sure, do you know anything about those Bob? Uh, and I, you know, what's that, uh, road that, uh. Go behind that, we can go down by Springwood and, uh, come out to Chester. Waterfall Road, they have, uh, they put in some extra there and I noticed they were about, I'm gonna say about three foot. And had a gradual. Hump like these in there, uh, these look smaller than that though. And it seemed like that they were just having, if they were just laid down. I, but then again, I was driving over them, I didn't get out to look, see how, how they were fixed.
Secured somewhere.
You'd think. Maybe they grew them, maybe grew them.
So the street department knows that we've got some terrible holes up and down those streets. I know they're gonna work on Main Street, but I noticed the middle of Water Street is unbelievable.
Not holes.
It's just one continual.
So they're probably just waiting until the weather turns.
Stays warm.
Yeah, I'd say April, May time for it.
Yeah, I'd say May or June.
It's unpredictable, isn't it?
Everybody, I think, is thinking that spring's here because we've had some nice weather, but that, that's when you get bit.
They'll, they'll get a rude awakening Monday, cause it's supposed to be in the thirties.
It ain't over, is it?
I gotta go look.
We had ice storms in April before.
Excuse me?
We've had ice storms in April.
Oh.
Yeah, and snow.
Okay, unfinished business, speed humps and paving South Maine, of course, waiting on the weather. Internal controls, corrective action plan under review, is that what we're reviewing, what we've been doing? What, and Anita and I have been doing, uh, for Kathy's benefit, I think we talked about it last month too, but, uh. State Board of Accounts seems to always ding us on internal controls and one of the things was, they didn't like the fact that only one person. Was getting the money, counting the money, depositing the money.
Tell me about it.
So, we've got a system where two or three times a week, I'll come in here, she'll get a deposit ready. Uh, I, cause I worked right across the street from it and so at lunchtime, I'll run it over there.
You sign off on it here and, okay?
Yeah, so that ought to pacify that, excuse me?
We appreciate you doing that.
Oh, no problem.
I did it once or twice.
Save Nita some gas money and time.
I appreciate it, um, and if we do get cash in a drop box, I always made a point to open it up. I let none of them before we open it up, witnesses, two of us do it.
I keep thinking every time I get it, if I call Kathy and we don't handle something, we could double this, but we haven't done it yet.
I'm teasing.
I know.
Okay, ordinance regulating open burning. All three of us had taken the ordinance home and looked at it, so we've had plenty of time to talk about it. Uh, we did have, uh, Adam look at them, he said both of them was good, I think what we should do is, uh. Just amend one of the other, we're taking a little bit from one to the other. One thing that I didn't like and, and, uh. What the plan is, is to, uh. On the proposed one that the new fire chief put in, uh, he has told us that what he wants to do is wants to get a good one in place here. And then take it to the township, which covers outside our set of limits, that they have the same thing up for that area, correct? So, he had, uh, recommended on the one that, uh, there not be a fine for the first time. Someone, uh, gets called on for a, an illegal fire, uh, they will go out and they'll tell them. If we have to come back out here again, it's a, he had proposed a thousand dollar fine. We talked it over most ourselves, uh, we think five hundred dollar fine is still high, but it's more in line than a thousand dollar fine. And basically, the, the finding itself is just to, uh, ensure that they don't do it again.
But the five hundred dollars is for the first.
No.
The, the war, the second time and the third time, he wants it even higher.
Oh, the third time, well, he was, the way I'd got it was that, uh. He was hoping that it would be enough that there wouldn't be a second time or a third time. So, and that's something what we'll do is, uh. We'll look at them, uh, cause we still each of us got them at home, see which one we wanna incorporate to the oven and then the next meeting we'll. Adopt it. And like I say, being Adam has already looked at them, I don't think we need to pay him four or five hours to. Rewrite the whole thing, that's my opinion, but you guys tell me.
I would agree, I'm, I'm inclined to go with the second one though, for the reasons he discussed with us, that, because it's a. It'd be a lot easier legally or whatever, cause it's got more set parameters and stuff in it.
You mean the one he's.
What you getting at Scott?
I'm getting it if there's ever an instance where we have to go fight in court, like civil court or something like that.
Oh, okay.
This, we, we got more of a leg to stand on with the one he's wrote because it's not vague. It's more specific.
Well, it's more specific to the size of the fire.
Well, everything throughout the whole ordinance, it's more specific.
So you think a thousand dollars is it now the question?
I, no, I don't agree with the thousand. I, 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 we discussed that, the five hundred sounded better to us, but at first we didn't understand that he didn't mean the first time. The first one would be a warning, that's where I was.
Well, and it's like he said, we don't want the money, we don't want them to do the fires.
Yes, right.
But it's a fine line, if, if I'm outside with hot dogs and marshmallows and I've got a fire in my yard, I'm okay. Even if the neighbor calls, such as Buddy and his bitch, and it goes, I got a fire. It's too bad, it's okay.
Fight meal for a hot dog and I won't.
And, and see, that's where, I like the second one because it specifically states how big it can be, so. If there's a issue, I mean, it's a lot easier to settle it because, hey, it's within the ordinance parameters.
Well, and like the ordinance that he's proposed, it talks about clean wood, no cardboard, no paper with ink, no. And it is more explanatory, like you said.
So I like the second one better, I just, like he said, we amend it, I'm actually more inclined to go warning. Five hundred, then just additional five hundred if they keep doing it, I don't think we really need to go to a thousand.
I don't think that nobody's, after the, if you can get the five hundred out of them, they're not gonna do it again anyway.
You're not gonna get the five hundred.
If you do, they won't pay their sewer bill for eight months.
But with the, with the new ordinance like that, if we had to take them to court and everything, we've actually.
Right.
We're gonna easily win, as opposed to the other one, which is pretty vague.
So I think, uh, on that note, we, uh, should be ready to adopt it by the next meeting, do you agree?
I have no problem with adopting it right now.
Well, I'm gonna look at them both, cause like you said, we're gonna kinda incorporate them a little bit.
Typed up formal, how you wanna type that before you adopt them.
And I'd like for him to go ahead and type them up.
That'd be great.
Doug, because he's the one that.
Sure.
Sure.
And he's got, he's got a good, uh, format on the other, I'm sure he adopted it from somewhere else and added some things and.
I, I just think we change it and do the, the five hundred, and then just, you know, if there's others, which shouldn't be, I just think we keep the same five hundred dollar fine.
You wouldn't wanna go to two, uh, zero, two fifty, five, and then hang five? You think five go, just going from zero to five is a little bit weird?
Well, if they know that going in, like he was, he had said it when we talked, he said, if you go over there and say, this fire's illegal, he's gonna carry, uh, as a fire chief, he's gonna carry copies of the ordinance in the vehicle, he's gonna hand them a copy of the ordinance, and gonna say, there's, we're not gonna find you this time, but if we have to come back for the same thing, it will be a five hundred dollar fine.
There you go.
But it'll get their attention, and he's right, you know, at first, we was thinking zero, two fifty, and then after he explained what he's talking about, we, we were thinking, uh, that it was gonna be a fine right off the bat, and it's not.
That's a good courtesy thing, not to do that. That's a warning, yes.
It's a warning, but it, we just wanna make sure it's a written warning, so we have a record of it, which he said it would be in the CAD anyways, but. It's still, not everybody here's gonna have access to that.
You're saying for the same thing, even if they have a fire, a, a different type of fire, that would be the third time then, like, or the second time on it.
It, well, it, it's an ordinance violation, so if they get.
Any violation.
If they get the same ordinance, the burn ordinance violation, I mean, it's gonna keep.
No matter what they're violating, you know?
Well, my thing is, once he hands them an ordinance, then it's up to them, anything in that ordinance, they need to read that.
And they've gotten, they've got that first warning, so it doesn't matter if they had a fire today, and then, oh, wait a minute, okay, they'd laid off, and then, like, say they're the same people, but it's two years down the road, and then bam, they do it again, they've already had their warning.
Yeah, so we need to keep a record of that.
Yeah.
Of, of property.
Which there will always be one in the CAD, which I'm thinking he can pull if he needs it.
Well, it wouldn't hurt though for us.
And then he, uh.
We have a, we have a file on every address, of everything that.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could keep.
So we need just a copy of the, I'm sure that could be created.
Yeah, if we can get with him to get it, so we can keep a record on hand here too, and everything.
Very good, okay, we may move on to new business. New business, State Board of Accounts audit invoices.
I have a copy of them there, don't you?
Oh, no, do we?
Do you think I see that you're gonna let us do the, you're, we're gonna get paperwork in early April for payments?
Yeah, for the, uh, sewer.
Sewer, yeah.
They're breaking it down over three years.
I don't think we have it.
No, we don't have it. Uh, I did call up there and talk to the, uh, guy in charge of that, and they're gonna break it down over three years, for the ten thousand dollars. Now, the other one's gonna, you know, automatically, the county, I'll probably make a ticket out of our, our taxes, correct?
There was, they will, yes, but when Rick made the call, he actually got us one year of payments on that. I, it doesn't matter, I mean, we'll pay, we'll pay it, and it might not be bad to get that out of the way, just.
Well, would you call the county for that, or would you call State Board of Accounts?
It's State Board of Accounts, it came from every, they sent us an invoice every month from State Board of Accounts.
I still can't believe they charged us that.
I, I don't, whatever you guys wanna do, it doesn't matter, I mean.
They may plan on taking it out of our taxes.
They do take it out of our taxes.
Well, and that's what he said, he said it's probably already taken out, and that's what the guy said on the phone, but he doesn't work for county, he wants to pay board of account.
Well, let's just, let's just leave it like that, the three years is really nice on the other one.
Yeah, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, last time, then we paid like six or seven hundred a month.
We did, we paid, well, we paid three hundred and something for each one a month, for twelve months.
Okay, and, and, uh.
But it wasn't as expensive as what it is now.
No, it was under eight thousand, wasn't it, last time, for seven years, and this was five years here.
Yeah, you know, I still, I, the question was brought to me, saying, now wait a minute, the people that, why does it, why do they have to charge like that? Because the people that work for the state get paid out of taxpayer money, don't they? Ain't that where their checks come from, taxpayer money? Well, and why are we having to pay that kind of money for inspection that they force on you to begin with?
The, the, the sewer has to be paid by the tax, by the, the.
Users.
The users, so, my guess is they've done an ordinance somewhere that says that, well, a portion of their pay comes from taxpayers. The town who's getting the audit, or the entity that's getting the audit, has to pay for part of that. And there's their equipment, there's, there's travel, their time, then they go back and spend a lot of time on it. So my guess would be that, that's the case on that, that they've written it so that we have to be responsible for part of it, otherwise,
I wouldn't probably get taken out of taxes.
They used to do that.
You lose control, I wouldn't want them to take it out of taxes.
They always have done it that way.
That's what they've always done us, yeah.
For the town, not the sewer, just the town.
They've always taken it out of taxes.
I didn't have them do that with me. I always paid.
We didn't, we had an option, really.
No, cause one year I, I wrote a check.
Yeah.
And then they took the money out, so we had to get, the very first year I was here, I didn't know that's how they did it. But they've always taken it out.
Except for the last time. Do you wanna go ahead and sign this now and later, you can sign it later, because I got it.
Yeah, we got, Kathy's gotta sign some stuff anyway, so we'll all sign it then. Okay, and the certification internal controls nepotism, this is basically from Kathy, cause, uh, we signed them at the last meeting.
Yeah.
And the aim database form, Kathy.
Yeah, I don't sign nepotism policy anymore, do I?
You don't sign the one that you, about the business, but everybody has to sign.
Yeah, everybody's gotta sign.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and read it.
You can go ahead, buddy.
Over, uh. All that's left after that, if you're gonna sign is approval of warrants, so that's why we're just, we're all looking at you sign with your left hand.
You say we were gonna try to do a, a sit down with, uh, about the memorandum?
Oh, not here I am, and I'm not gonna hear.
What is today's date, please?
Today's fourteenth.
Thank you. Here you go.
Okay, I mean, this was from, and the address has already gone, there's places on the back, you can read that though. I'll use your right away, just, I can't read it to you.
Oh, okay.
You got warrants.
Mm-hmm. Did you get that solved with New Ways?
Oh, yeah, good, I imagine you wrote that up.
Nope, it shouldn't have ever happened.
Well, I was on the phone with them for a while, I haven't gotten anywhere yet with it, but, um, when, apparently, New Ways is who contacted Frontier and canceled it, no one here did do it. But as a third, a third party canceled it, so when New Ways called to, I don't know who signed that paper, I don't know yet who signed it, if it was New Ways that signed it, if it was one of our people, but basically, they wanted to retain our phone numbers, and they said, hey, we're transferring service to us. So, no one from here, is my understanding, ever spoke to Frontier.
Not to my knowledge.
So I, I, um, have another phone number to call, and see, the fax machine is still on Frontier, it never got canceled. It's still active line with Frontier, that we just owe on. So, I've got one more number to try to call, one more version to beat down. So is it New Ways problem, they just haven't? No, the, the problem is, the first problem is, we shouldn't have done it, because there were, there were no eyes of, of the town looking, catching on the bill that we were in a contract. And I have no idea what the conversation was with New Ways when they took care of it, if there was a conversation, they may have filled out a form and sent it in. But what I don't underst, yeah, I, I don't understand how, since we were technically in a contract, that we weren't notified before that took place, and I don't believe we were.
And how long a contract, what, yeah, lifetime?
It renewed automatically every two years. And that honestly is something that we never paid attention to. We got a great deal several years ago, I'm gonna say in, I'm gonna say like oh eight, maybe. I have to look, see what the num, the number is on the bill, but it was where, we went down, we went, our, our bill decreased probably by a hundred, a hundred fifty bucks, to take their internet and the phone for the business. Well, their internet with Frontier was never good, it was terrible, but we saved so much money, we just kept New Ways at the time, which is New Lisbon now, we kept them for the internet. Well, then, they came along with their new fiber thing, and they hounded and hounded, and finally got ahold of somebody here that said, okay, we'll go ahead and do it. And we don't know who that is?
Don't know who they got ahold of.
Yeah, I don't know who, we don't know who they got ahold of here, wasn't me, and I, technically.
Wasn't me, wasn't you?
Technically, it would have been one of us, so, the guy, whoever, male, female, whoever, from New Lisbon, sent in the paperwork, I found that out. They're the ones who sent in the paperwork to retain the phone number and to close the Frontier account, or to close the Frontier account. So, then the bill came.
They shouldn't have had the authority to be able to do that to begin with, should they?
I wouldn't have thought so, I would not have thought so. So it sounds like a bigger mess, and, you know, and I'm not opposed, honestly, if we could work something out with Frontier, I'm not opposed to forgetting New Lisbon, I do like their internet, I'd be happy to keep it.
Yeah, we got.
And just go back to Frontier, but, yeah, I don't even know if we can do that now.
Do we have some type of contract with New Lisbon now?
I need to find that out, I don't believe that we do, because who signed it? You didn't sign it, I didn't sign it, nobody's.
I wasn't even here yet.
Well, that's a good.
Oh, you let it on. But I, I really, none of us, it, it all happened.
I know, I didn't sign it.
And my guess would be, it would be the sales rep. I know I didn't sign it. From New Lisbon that probably put that, got that whole ball, I'll take care of everything, I'll take, that's my.
I can understand that, I'd do that.
Anyway, there's a lot of money involved.
Huh? You want donation?
But you know, here's the thing, even if we tried to go after New Lisbon and say, look, you guys did this, and we didn't authorize you to do it, how much money are we gonna spend compared to the situation we're in right now with what we?
Two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Glory fees.
So it'd be nice if we could just get them to work it out with us, we're small, we never set out to, to, uh, shortchange anybody, that wasn't our intentions. All we wanted was decent internet and saving money.
I don't know, I've con, I've never seen a contract with, uh.
I don't believe there is one.
I don't either.
But I haven't tackled them yet, and Robbie, the horrible, is no longer there, he's moved on.
Yeah, that's for.
Well, maybe.
That's for the ride home, he lives in Congress. Okay, uh, if you're done with Kathy, I think we're ready for the winners.
See you later.
Thanks, Bob.
By the way, there's a sheet up there, if somebody wants a pedicament, I mean, who knows how to take care of.
Oh, up here?
Yeah, that green, that green sheet up there.
Oh, yeah, that's a good note, because I'll build a.
Yeah, they just need to come here and send me.
I've just always called you anyways.
I know.
We'll just call you.
Well, he, he came to get one at the courthouse, like, we don't even do that here, and I was like, it's done in the annex, but you live in Greensport, they don't handle Greensport.
Right.
That is nice, we can get a local one now, though.
Get one.
Getting it local here instead of having a great way to.
Hairspray.
It's rolling in. What, Brenda? Isn't it supposed to storm?
It's, it's starting to, now, the lighting's starting to pick up.
Sounds like it's, uh, thinking about doing something.
Janice, are you allowed to drive at night? I didn't know.
Let's wait, then. Are you allowed to drive at night? Lucky she's laughing, otherwise she'll whip you.
What'd you say?
I said it's a good thing you're laughing, otherwise she'll whip you. Oh, it says seek shelter now, four o'clock, just walk.
Is that what it said?
Yep.
What'd it say, seek shelter? Guys can't leave. Don't ruin your windows up, I think my window might be down, are you kidding me?
It's not, it's not.
Hell, I'm not in the last car, so.
I get that, guys, your, my windows are down, but it's all good.
Always put those on my vehicles.
They're nice to have.
Yes, they are. Even if it rains, it doesn't matter, it's not getting yet.
Well. Well, you remember earlier today, how the line was like this, coming across the whole state? Well, now it's like this, coming across three states, coming right towards Richmond.
Really?
But it all depends on how it's gonna play out.
But it's not raining right now?
Uh, it's, I don't know about raining, it, it shows red, but it's kinda misleading, you know, it's, like earlier today, only like fifteen, twenty minutes of rain, it seemed like, it was over. But these are the ones, you wonder if they're, they're gonna have like high winds or something for a few minutes before it hits, and then.
Welcome to Indiana.
Yeah, right now it's raining.
If you don't like the weather, give it a couple days, it'll change.
We'll talk about snow sometime.
Uh, uh, listen, oh, gosh, sirens are going.
It is.
I don't hear them. Just already got them.
We got a siren?
No.
No, not anymore.
No, the police car's out, I seen the flashing lights over there on Main Street, lot of them.
He, I'm a rest of the guy, we getting the quarter, oh, I'm sorry, we have no quarters.
I'll wait till we adjourn, to tell you a couple things.
Wait, did you sign them?
Make a motion we accept the warrants.
One second, if it's been made and properly seconded, accept the warrants, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same. Anybody got anything else they need to bring before the board, before we adjourn the meeting? Janice, got anything, going once, going twice, I'll make a motion we adjourn the meeting.
Second it.
Motion's been made and properly seconded, adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same, aye, aye, aye.